Okay, um, uh, this is the December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two regular village board meeting. Uh, we call the meeting to order. Let's have a roll call, please.
Trustee Hallwax.
Here.
Trustee Listener.
Here.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Here.
Trustee Andredunk.
Here.
Trustee Rubin.
Here.
Trustee Vrie.
Here.
President Rowan.
Here. Um, we are live streaming this meeting and have posted the links to the livestream on the village's social media pages. We will make the recording available on the village's YouTube channel following the conclusion of tonight's meeting. The second item on the agenda is consideration of minutes. We've circulated the minutes for the regular meeting from November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. Um, unless there are any comments, is there a motion to approve the minutes from November seventeen, two thousand twenty-two?
I'm moved.
There are second. Um, uh, voice vote, all in favor.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is public comment. This portion of the meeting allows for those in attendance to address the board regarding non-agenda items. I'll request that public comments that relate to agenda items be provided when we reach that item on the agenda. Public comments related to the public hearing on the appropriations ordinance will be heard at that time. All comments should be limited to three minutes, and I'll notify the speaker when the time is up. Are there any public comments about non-agenda items? Okay, I don't see any, so that takes care of that item on the agenda. The next item is reports of committees. The first report is usually the committee of the hall, but we didn't have a meeting, so there's no report. The next report is the finance committee, trustee Vrie.
Thank you. Um, we did not actually have a meeting this month, um, though we reviewed the village finances. Um, and as it's, we're eleven months into the year, as we've said throughout the year, um, village finances are in good shape. Um, the one thing of note is that property tax bills went out late. You should have hopefully received yours by now. Um, so we would, we expect all the revenue from property taxes to come in as expected, though later than normal. Um, as far as the rest of the village finances, sales tax is probably the most notable in terms of coming in ahead of expectations. Um, though I will say, the most recent several months, we're getting a, a bit of a negative trend in terms of year-over-year, um, growth, uh, where we've, we've turned negative and perhaps there's some amount of, um, retail activity or, or falling retail activity. Um, but on the whole, village finances are in good shape. It's been that way all year and has continued through November.
Okay, thanks. The next report is the plan commission, trustee Listener.
Yes, well, we met on November thirtieth. Um, we did several things. The first thing we did was some exterior appearance reviews for, for some new signage. There were two different locations. One was a second floor office, um, on, uh, and that one, uh, was on Park Avenue, and we approved that for the, um, office user Sunset Foods, not to be confused with Sunset Foods, the retailer. Um, and then also, we approved multiple signs for the One Stop Trev Shop, which is the Nutria Transition Center at six forty Vernon. Um, then we moved on to the work that we're doing on the comprehensive plan. Various commissioners gave reports about what they've been hearing from the different groups that they've been visiting with. And then also, our consultants, TESCA, kind of gave their state-of-the-community presentation, um, based on surveys, um, and meetings that they've held, um, with, you know, gaining public feedback. And the things that they've been looking for, what people's opinions are relating to Glencoe's strengths. And we heard that it was items like location, economics, leadership, community amenities, you know, great place to raise a family, welcoming spirit. Those were all mentioned as strengths. In terms of weaknesses, the things that were raised were tax burden, a dated zoning code, limited diversity and sustainability. And then in terms of opportunities, items that were mentioned were home rule, intergovernmental coordination, economic development, and sustainability efforts. Um, we're not meeting this month, but we will be continuing our work and meeting at the end of January. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Uh, the next report is the golf advisory committee. Uh, we're gonna hear more about, about that a little later, but trustee Hallwax.
Yes, obviously, there's a lot to, uh, talk about tonight with the, uh, with, with the, uh, the golf course, but, um, obviously, it's, it's winter, so golf has, has crawled to, uh, to, uh, um, slow. And, you know, at the last meeting, we talked about the capital plans and all the capital projects that were, that were completed this season. Our next meeting is on Monday, so there'll be more to update after, after the meeting on Monday. But obviously, tonight, we have more to talk about in terms of the plans for, uh, for a new clubhouse, so I'll keep my comments short.
Okay. Um, next, the sustainability task force, trustee Mulvaney.
Uh, yes, the sustainability task force has been meeting to continue our mission of making Glencoe the most sustainable, uh, and desirable community in the galaxy. Some of the things that we are tackling to meet that mission, uh, number one, I want to make folks aware that we've organized, uh, with the library, as we've been doing over the past several years, for another great speaker, Professor Gray from Northwestern University. She'll be speaking about climate change. She has done some local research. She's worked on the lagoons over here as an asset, which I hope, um, commissioner Listener becomes part of that sort of positive strength, um, for, for Glencoe, is a great recreational site anyhow. Um, Professor Gray, she will be speaking, I don't know when, but sometime soon, so look for it, and she'll be speaking about climate change, um, Northwestern University. We are working on, um, a climate action plan for Glencoe. This may not be wrapped up before I'm wrapped up with the board, so I want to make sure that all of you take that seriously, and please recognize that sustainability and governance are not two separate things. Sustainability is on the fringe. It was the only word mentioned twice by commissioner Listener with the planning side, once as a weakness and once as an interest. So I think we need to, um, make sure that we take sustainability seriously and really, um, keep that on the forefront of the village board. So that, that, um, report is being developed through committee and, um, progressing. We also talked about input into the golf course, uh, wanting to make sure that we do consider as much as possible any sort of sustainability element. We give recognition to the golf course as being a, a leader, uh, in their space with respect to their operations. Uh, let's continue that leadership with the facility and the building, and whatever you think you can do, do a little more, uh, in the planning. We'll talk about that later. Uh, we talked about the LRS contract, so something that, um, we would like to do is have a little bit of input, and we had some good discussion around this waste hauling contract. One of these items, uh, for example, would be moving to twice a month instead of every week. This may sound crazy to some, but it seems very obvious to others who think about the impact of having these, uh, vehicles driving on our streets and the fact that I usually have one or two bags in these giant bins you don't need every week. Anyway, so, so we would like to have some input into that dialogue. That's been, uh, started with Jeff, and we'll get some more information about that. We were trying to stimulate a little more education out of LRS to make sure we're doing things right, uh, and with respect to recycling and that it is an effective practice. Uh, so we wanna lean on LRS a little bit more in this moment of contract negotiation. Uh, we are also planning to purchase some additional banners for our light posts, so, uh, with various messages around sustainability. I hope that you've noticed that there are some out there with sustainability messages. Uh, those were purchased by the task force budget a year or two ago. Uh, we'll be refreshing those with the use of our emblem. Everybody knows whose sustainability's mascot emblem, please give it to me. Ruby, right, Ruby, Ruby the Hummingbird. We should all know this. My gosh, it was voted on by the folks you're representing. That is the Ruby, the, the hummingbird. You'll see, you'll see Ruby flying around, uh, if we do things right in our landscapes, right? Um, hmm. I think that's everything to report. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you for that report. The next report is the council for inclusion and community, trustee Rubin.
Uh, thank you. The council met on, uh, December seventh, and we got a presentation on the village's comprehensive plan update from our village planner, Lee Brown, and consultant Terry Johnson. Um, it was an excellent, um, presentation and back and forth, um, sort of as a beginning of, of the discussion, uh, because of the overlap, the obvious overlaps between what we're doing and the goals of the plan. So those will be, those discussions will be ongoing, um, as they will be with all the various and sundry, uh, stakeholders and groups that you, you all are talking with. Uh, that was the bulk of the meeting, uh, but we also talked about, uh, preparations for our next, uh, speaker's event, which is January thirty-first, six thirty P M., Writers' Theater. It should be really interesting. It'll, it's, uh, the title is "The Importance of a Welcoming and Inclusive Community as Told from the Perspective of an Afghan and a Former Soviet Refugee Three Decades Apart." And, um, I think the two people that will be speaking will make it very interesting, so I hope you all can attend.
Uh, thanks for that. Um, uh, the preservation commission, formerly the Historic Preservation Commission, trustee Andredunk.
Thank you very much. The preservation commission met on December sixth. Uh, we continued the discussion of the November comprehensive plan with Lee Brown from TESCA Associates, our village planner and Tay- Taylor Baxter, the village's development services manager. The discussion focused on what the preservation commission has learned about past preservation efforts and the local housing market in the village. Uh, we think this, uh, information will inform us as for policies in the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan should state the value of preservation and how it relates to sustainability, zoning, and diversity. Uh, we planner types call these cross-cutting issues. Um, in addition, the, uh, commission considered ways to support the rehabilitation and expansion of existing homes in place of demolition, including incentives, special zoning, building codes, education, and recognition. There were no new applications for demolition, and our January tenth, uh, will be devoted to establishing goals and objectives for the upcoming comprehensive plan. Uh, and, uh, if time permits, we'll talk about upcoming, uh, actions that, uh, we can discuss as part of that plan. Thank you.
Thanks for that report. That concludes the reports of committees. The next item on the agenda is reports of officers, and the first one is the village managers' report. Bill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Uh, just a few items I wanted to, uh, walk through this evening. The first is just a quick program update on our curbside leaf collection program, uh, which concluded, uh, the first week of December, and by all accounts, was quite successful. As you may recall, uh, in addition to the use of our own staff, we utilized a new vendor to assist with collection, and that was a very successful effort, so we'll be building on that for next year. In total, about ten thousand cubic yards of leaves were collected over the seven-week program. Heaviest volume was collected between November third and seventeenth, when about, uh, half of the total, uh, was collected. Um, and of course, we remain very grateful to our partner, the Chicago Botanic Garden, for continuing to make the program possible by accepting and then composting every leaf that we bring them. Uh, it's a really great recycling effort and community partnership. So, uh, until next year, um, uh, curbside leaf collection is done for two thousand twenty-two. Um, I wanted to give a brief update on our water main replacement. Uh, that's going on, uh, over in the Skokie Lagoons. It is underway, and it's on schedule. Um, as you're aware, the village's contractors have been, uh, hard at work replacing about twenty-five hundred lineal feet of sixteen-inch water main that traverses underneath the Skokie Lagoons, uh, to connect our system to our elevated tank, which is located west of the Edens Expressway. Uh, this past Friday, contractors were able to set the entire twenty-five hundred feet, um, in a bored path underneath the lake. Uh, it exists about five feet below the bottom of the lake, and I will say, it is just a fascinating operation. President Rowan and I, uh, were taken on a tour of the, of that operation by Dave Mao and Don Kirk, uh, on Friday. Uh, very unique equipment, essentially pulled the entire length of that main underneath the lake, um, from west, from east to west. Um, it consisted of forty-foot sections that had each been fused together, uh, and laid out along Forestway Drive, so leading up to last Friday, if you were driving along there and you noticed a very long snake-like, um, apparatus, that's what that was. Um, and it was then pulled through this tunnel, which was created by directionally boring about a twenty-four inch, um, uh, path from one end of the work area to another. Uh, this week, crews are finishing up the final, uh, components of connecting the new main to the existing, uh, portions of the main, uh, and we expect it to be fully operational by the end of the year. I thought it was interesting, at this meeting last year, I reported we were just wrapping up an emergency repair of that same sixteen-inch water main, uh, which necessitated a full shutdown at that time, and then, because, uh, it broke again, necessitated a full shutdown this September, uh, which happened shortly after the village board approved the contract to replace it. Chronic breaks on this line have been a significant problem for us for the last several years. Remarkably, they've almost always happened in the month of December. Uh, so it was, uh, to some degree, a bit of a joke between the public works director and I that it was a Christmas miracle every year when the main didn't break. Um, I am grateful, and I know we all will breathe a little bit easier, uh, when this, uh, large, uh, project is finally finished. Um, we will be pushing more information out to the community, uh, but it's really, it was really a fascinating process. I know President Rowan was, was fascinated by it too, uh, just to kind of see how this all works. Um, grateful to the team, Dave and Don, Alex Urbancik and Frank Coletti, for all they've been doing to keep things, uh, operational. Um, a fact that some people don't know is that our water tower really functions as a balancing agent for our entire water distribution system. A lot of people think it's just for storage, and that is a, a significant portion of what it's for, but it balances the system. Since this main has been out of operation, uh, we haven't been able to use the tower to balance the system, and so the water plant compensates. You, through the use of pumping and various pumping mechanisms, to ensure that we have consistent water pressure throughout the entirety of the system. Without consistent water pressure, you get water main breaks or you get, uh, boil orders. And, um, the engineering of all of this is really fascinating. Dave Mao unfortunately couldn't be here this evening. He would have given you a better engineering speak, uh, overview, but I, I just have my excitement, um, to be able to convey. So it really is, uh, it's been a great project. Uh, as a reminder, this project is the third of three phases to replace essentially from Elder Lane all the way to the Edens. Um, and this leg of that project is the largest, most complex, most expensive, paid for with American Recovery Plan Act dollars. So, um, it's also extended the usability of our water tank. Uh, that was something we were contemplating, having to relocate to, uh, this side of the Edens. Um, now with this new, uh, main in place, I think we can postpone that work for a decade or more. So, a great project, multifaceted, most people don't see it, never will think about it, may never care, um, and that's exactly the way it should be. Uh, but I'm always grateful when stuff works as it's supposed to, and this, this certainly did.
Hey, let me just add.
Yeah.
It was enormously cool. This is our Hoover Dam, because the water tower, it was probably an okay idea in nineteen twenty-five when they put the water tower there, but that was before there was an expressway and before there were, were lagoons. If they had known, they probably wouldn't have done it, but, you know, drilling this theme, it was way cool and a, and a great accomplishment. Uh, I will note that in next-door Glencoe, there was some griping this week about how come the bicycle path is closed. And, you know, I, 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 John, I think, or, or Sammy, I think we should respond and tell them, we had to put a pipe in, um, and that's why it's closed, and it'll be open when we're done. Anyway, fabulous accomplishment, um, pushing the water problem out.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, I, I always do a pitch in December on shopping local, and I will say that our commercial districts have been bustling, especially this holiday season. Um, so as always, we, we encourage everyone to shop and dine locally, especially if you're enjoying a cultural opportunity in Glencoe, such as Lightscape at the Botanic Gardens, which runs through January second, or taking in a show at Writers' Theater. Um, I will say that we've been producing a short, uh, video series called Office Hours. Uh, this week's episode, um, is, uh, has been streaming on our various social media platforms, and it spotlights really the value of thinking Glencoe first for all shopping and dining this holiday season, and always, because, um, our downtown and our business district is unique in the number of small, locally-owned, um, entrepreneurial-based businesses that, um, really give Glencoe its unique feel. Um, so always shopping local is, uh, is the mantra that we, uh, preach, uh, here at Village Hall. Um, along those lines, this week, on NBC News, um, two Glencoe small businesses were spotlighted in their national broadcast, Wild Child Toys and Black Sheep General Store. While they didn't spend a lot of time talking about Glencoe specifically, I was a little hurt that they referred to us as suburban Chicago.
Suburbans, how dare they? And, and, and what the news broadcast, national news broadcast, was one of the networks.
Yes, that's right, that's right.
It was actually NBC, but if they can't say Glencoe, we can say NBC.
It was, yeah, one of those news networks that we just can't remember. Um, they, I, I, a lot of the story was really focused on inflationary pressures and how that's impacting how people are shopping this holiday season, but, um, they followed a family, a, a, a Chicago regional family who, uh, does a lot of their shopping here in downtown Glencoe. So it was great to see our streetscape, um, and our storefronts, uh, spotlighted on the national news. But it does underscore just the, um, unique nature of, of our downtown. I will say, they reached out, that news network that shall not be named, to the Chamber of Commerce, um, shortly before the filming took place on Saturday morning, this past Saturday morning. Um, when they wrapped, they all commented on what a great downtown this is and how this is a spot that they may come back for future stories, uh, where they're looking for great B-roll, uh, if nothing else. So, um, I always say, that kind of press is good press. So, uh, even if they didn't say it was Glencoe, we all knew it was Glencoe, and we'll make everybody else know that it was Glencoe. So, um, so shop local this holiday season. A couple of quick holiday announcements, um, for the federal holidays of Christmas and New Years, which both fall on Sundays this year. Um, the village hall, uh, will be closed for the holiday observances on Monday, December twenty-sixth and January second. Offices will reopen that Tuesday of both weeks. Uh, Monday and Tuesday garbage and recycling collection will be delayed by one day, both of those weeks, uh, so just a, a reminder on that front. Coming up this Sunday, uh, at about five forty-five, uh, annually since two thousand thirteen, um, there's been a fireworks display at the Glencoe Golf Club that has been sponsored by Am Shalom in memory of, uh, of a young boy who, uh, passed away back in two thousand thirteen, uh, after a brave fight, uh, with leukemia. Um, we are pushing that information out, um, to make sure that people are aware of it. We always do get questions, but, but particularly this year, as, as folks are more sensitive to, um, uh, sounds that may not be expected, uh, we want to make sure that folks are aware that those fireworks are taking place, uh, this Sunday, again at five forty-five, uh, at the Glencoe Golf Club. We've shared that information with our neighbors in Highland Park, as well as the Botanic Garden, uh, since they have Lightscape going on at the same time, so anyone who's at Lightscape at around that time, uh, will have the benefit of seeing the fireworks very close up. Lastly, uh, just on behalf of the entire staff, want to wish everyone a happy and healthy New Year, uh, and we'll see everyone back in two thousand twenty-three. That's it for my report this evening.
Thanks for that report. I'm gonna have a brief report. Uh, first, um, I, I want to acknowledge the, the recent death of a longtime Glencoe resident named Stan Weinberger. Uh, Stan lived a long life, which is good, and during that life, he devoted a lot of time to the village of Glencoe. He was president of the school board. He was also a longtime member of the village's plan commission. Um, he was an important person in this village. He helped, uh, make it better, and in behalf of, uh, the village, I want to pass along our condolences to his family. Um, second thing I want to say is, it's been, uh, you know, we're coming out of COVID. It's been a challenging year, um, but I want, and, and I want to thank, um, the members of the village board for, for your work in behalf of the village. Um, and I also want to thank the staff who actually do everything. Um, everything that's been accomplished has been accomplished because the, the village staff has worked so hard in our interest. I, you know, that means the public safety officers and the lieutenants, the public works maintenance operators, the water plant operators and supervisors, the golf club team, and all of our administrative and office staff, um, and the department heads. Uh, we are lucky in Glencoe that we have such an energetic, effective, dedicated workforce that makes our situation better every day. So, uh, thanks to all of you. And then finally, I want to wa- wish everyone in the village, uh, a happy, healthy New Year. And that's my village president's report. The next item on the agenda, item six, is a public hearing and consideration of an ordinance making appropriations for corporate purposes of the village of Glencoe for calendar year beginning January one, two thousand twenty-three, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. Um, I'm gonna open the public hearing now, and I'll ask our finance director, Nikki Larson, to present the, the ordinance. Nikki.
Okay. Good evening. It's not often that I have to move the microphone up. Um, okay. As part of the public hearing this evening, uh, we have a number of items that we're going to be reviewing that, um, some of which are included on the consent agenda. Um, those are listed on the screen before you. Additional detail on all of these items is included in the packet, um, and again, these are all related to our two thousand twenty-three budget process. I will go through these one at a time. Please feel free to interrupt me with questions, um, and we'll just kick this off here. The first item, um, is item number six on the agenda, um, public hearing on the appropriations ordinance. Um, this ordinance is required to be adopted by the village in, by statute, um, and I apologize, the numbers on the screen are a little bit tiny, but they're also in your packet. Um, this ordinance sets the maximum legal spending limit, uh, for the village for the entire calendar year. It's based on the line item budget that's also included for approval on, um, the agenda this evening, and we essentially take ten percent and add that, um, to what we have adopted, um, for the budget. And then, again, that sets the legal limit that we cannot exceed. Um, in accordance with statute, notice of the hearing this evening was published in, um, the newspaper on November twenty-fourth. Um, in total, the appropriations ordinance is forty-nine million, one hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. That includes the village's operating, capital, enterprise, and pension funds, and also the Glencoe Public Library. The next item on consent is the budget ordinance, and this is also obviously for calendar year two thousand twenty-three. This is starting on page one oh seven in your packet. Um, the two thousand twenty-three budget is a result of months and months of planning and public discussions. Um, we started our public discussion in August with a financial policy review, which really set the tone for the budget discussions this year. Um, and then we rounded that out with a financial forecast in October. That's a five-year financial plan, um, that sets our, our spending projections, uh, for the next five years. Um, and then the community investment plan, the tax levy, and the draft budget were all reviewed, um, at the finance committee in November. Um, in total- In total, the budget is $34.3 million in revenue, $37.6 million in expenditures. That does include one-time use of reserves for capital, which I'll go through in a moment. When we include the pension funds, the total, oh, sorry, total revenue is $38.2 million and $41.8 in expenditures. The reason why we separate those out is that the village's pension funds are statutorily controlled, and we have very little control over those expenditures, as we're required to pay them out. So really, we focus on those first two numbers, because those are within our control. The one-time use of reserves for capital include general fund revenue, approximately 1.4 million, motor fuel tax fund reserve and four, and the amount of 410,000, golf club fund reserve and the amount of 637,000, and then the capital fund reserve of $3.1 million. And that represents the balance of the 2021 referendum bonds that are funding infrastructure projects this year and next. All of these expenditures of reserves are in accordance with the village's 10-year plan. As part of that 10-year plan, we have a comprehensive financing plan in which we aggregate fund reserve, and we combine that with bond financing to make sure that we can meet the infrastructure needs of the village over the next 10 years. In total, that 10-year plan is $52.3 million over the next 10 years, with 7.9 million proposed in calendar year 2023 alone. So there are definitely some significant needs there. As part of the budget, we are planning a $4.3 million alternate revenue bond issue. That, again, was part of this financing plan, and will be used in 2023 and 2024 to fund water main improvements. The budget document and the budget ordinance outline detailed expenditures by fund, but this chart reflects the summary budget, and I, again, I apologize, it's kind of small on the screen, but this is in your budget packet. This reflects the total revenue and expense by fund, working left to right. We have the projected fund balance that we're anticipating at the close of this year, the total revenue proposed in the budget, total expense proposed in the budget, and then that fourth column from the left indicates whether there's a surplus or a deficit, the deficit being a planned use of fund reserves in accordance with the village policy. And then that last column shows the projected fund balance, if everything is to go as planned, which we know won't happen, but at least that gives us an idea of where we anticipate landing at the close of next year. To the right, that little chart reflects where we would fall within our two main operating funds in accordance with this budget. Both of those funds are anticipated to end the year in excess of fund balance, and again, we do have a comprehensive plan to draw that down in accordance with our policy. Moving on to item E, this is starting on packet page 130 of the packet. This is the consideration of the proposed tax levy for tax year 2022, which will be collected in 2023. The village portion of this levy, excluding debt service, is just over $11.6 million, which represents a 5.83% increase over last year's extension. In accordance with the property tax extension law, the village is capped at the higher of CPI, or a 5% increase from one year to the next. This year, because inflation is elevated, we are able to levy a maximum increase of 5%. We do request slightly above that to account for any new growth in the EAV, as the community is renovated and gains value. When we include the debt service levy and the Glencoe Public Library, the total levy is just over $16.9 million, or a 4.42% increase over last year's levy. Moving on to item F, this is starting on page 146 of your packet, is the Washington Place Special Service Area. As, excuse me, as some of the board members may recall, this original special service area was created in 2015. It's a Washington Place area to pay for repairs to a private road prior to the village taking responsibility of the road. This special service area is administered by the village, because at the time of its creation, the residents requested that each property within the special service area pay an equal amount to repay the amount that was due to repair this road. So as a result, we do, we are required to pass an annual levy to memorialize this process, but the finance department does actually issue these bills and collect the money on behalf of the village. This is a 15-year special service area, so we expect this to happen each year through the year of 2030. And at this point, I'll turn the presentation over to Assistant Finance Director Margaret Schwartz, and she will review the next two items with you.
Thank you, Director Larson. Good evening. Item G on the consent agenda is the fee and fine schedule resolution. As part of the budget development process, staff annually reviews various fees, fines, and charges for village services. The calendar year 2023 budget includes several proposed changes to the fees, and the detail of all increases and changes can be found in your board packet, starting on page 153. Water rates are increasing by 7%, which is in line with the water rate study assumptions. Our sanitary sewer rates are increasing 5% to cover costs related to mandates by the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District. The Lake Shore Recycling Contract was extended this year, and per the new contract, the general collection service fee is increasing 5%. Several other fees, such as residential and commercial false alarm fees, ambulance fees, and some building and firm, building and permit fees, have increased or changed. Also, the electrical, electric vehicle charging station and golf club rates also have slightly increased. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now. I'll move on to item H on the consent agenda, is the multi-year contracts resolution. As part of the budget process, the village reviews all multi-year contracts greater than $25,000, and we bring them before the board for review and approval in accordance with the village's purchasing policy. These contracts and payments are routine, and funds for these contracts are included in the calendar year 2023 budget. If there are questions about the multi-year contract resolution, I'd be happy to answer those. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Okay, we're in the home stretch. The last item related to the 2023 budget is the annual supplemental appropriations ordinance and budget amendment corresponding. Each year, as a matter of practice, the village does a comprehensive review of our actual and projected expenditures for the year, and we review that to identify any anticipated expenses that had come up throughout the year. We do this for two reasons. First and foremost, we do this to ensure that we're being transparent to the community and to the village board of where we were projecting certain expenditures, and something went awry, or something came up that was unanticipated. And within the agenda item in your packet, which starts on page 177, there is a detailed summary, if you'd like to dig into it, it's all there, for everything that came up this year that we weren't anticipating, that we do want to amend the budget and the corresponding appropriations ordinance for. The second reason that we do this is to ensure that we will not exceed our legal level spending of, a level of spending authority. And that, again, is not only relevant within the budget ordinance, but also the supplemental appropriations ordinance, which is approximately 10% higher than the budget. Okay, that include, that concludes the entire packet related to 2023 budget, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Nikki. Thank you, Margaret, for clear, concise, pithy presentation. The rea, and I think everybody knows this, but let me, let me ask first. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on the appropriation ordinance and the budget that's, that's hearing. I don't see a lot of people that might comment, but in case Casper, the ghost, is here, is there anyone that wants to comment on the ordinance? Okay, no public comments, so I'm going to, before we close the hearing, are there any board members that want to comment? And let me, let me just say that, as a board, we've talked about this, all, all these things. We talked about the finance committee, previous board meetings. Are there any other comments? I don't see any, so I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's have a roll call.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listner.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
The motion carries. And then, unless there's just further discussion, is there a motion to approve the appropriation ordinance?
So moved.
There's a, it's been moved and seconded, let's have a roll call.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listner.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
The motion carries. The appropriation ordinance is approved. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes some items that Nikki and Margaret just talked about, and, but otherwise, these are items that have been published online for the community, they've been circulated to the, to the village board. We don't think they require any further discussion, but if anyone disagrees, now's your chance. And if not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I had one quick question, and I think we've discussed this before, but the body camera line item is a mandate?
Correct. That is correct, yes.
It's a mandate, we're, we're maybe ahead of the schedule, but, or we're, we're in front of the mandated date, but we're...
Correct, yeah, that, we are required by state statute to implement a body camera program no later than January 1, 2025, based off of what we understand with respect to lead times on getting some of this equipment. It is in our interest to try to move forward in the current, in the coming fiscal year. So the contract that's on the agenda this evening anticipates getting started in 2023 with full compliance by state statute, by the state statute date.
And then, sort of related, is there additional training that we'll need to plan for and pay for when we receive this equipment, or is it, you know, wear it and you're done? I don't know.
Yes, there is additional training, part of our service agreement, initial training.
Okay, good.
All of our staff, and then we'll be ongoing training.
Thank you.
Okay. If there aren't any other questions, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, let's have a voice vote, please.
A roll call.
A roll, I'm sorry, roll call.
Trustee Hallwax.
It's a roll.
It's a roll call. Yes. Trustee Listner.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
The motion carries, consent agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda, regular business, we have one item, consideration of an ordinance providing for and requiring the submission of a proposition of issuing general obligation bonds to the voters of the village of Glencoe, Cook County, Illinois, at the consolidated election to be held on April 4, 2023. This is about the golf club project, and I'll ask our finance director Nikki Larson to present.
Thank you, President Rowan. Starting on packet page 251 is a complete summary of this agenda item. It is an ordinance providing for and requiring the submission of a proposition of issuing general obligation bonds. This is particularly seeking voter authorization to issue up to $15 million in general obligation bonds to fund the replacement of the golf club clubhouse and other site improvements on that campus. This is generally to just formally authorize the placement of this question to the voters on the April 4 municipal ballot that will happen in 2023. If this ordinance is approved this evening, village staff will follow up with the Cook County Clerk's Office, there will be a formal filing, and then the Cook County Clerk will be responsible for publishing that publicly to communicate this, that this is coming for voters. The ordinance that's included in your packet was drafted with input from the village's municipal attorney, thank you Steve for your assistance, and also the village's bond council, the firm of Chapman and Cutler. And I will turn it over to Manager Karali to provide a little bit more context on this item.
Yes, thank you, Nikki, and Stella Nanos, our golf club manager, is also here this evening, should there be any specific questions. But just as a brief overview, this is something we have been discussing for a number of years at this point. The village board, back in 2010, convened a clubhouse task force to consider and review options related to the potential for a replacement of our current clubhouse and pro shop facility. In 2012, they issued a report to the village board that the clubhouse should be replaced. Since that time, there have been a number of actions that have taken place relative to this project, the first of which was a negotiation with the Cook County Forest Preserve District to add a first amendment to the original 1923 land use agreement. That was finalized in 2017. The creation of the Friends of the Glencoe Golf Club, which was a not-for-profit 501(c)(3) organization intended to help with generating private dollars to support the Glencoe Golf Club, was created in 2019. In 2020, a fundraising feasibility study with Campbell and Company was completed, and in early 2021, the village board approved a debt forgiveness plan that has been memorialized in our budget as one of our financial policies. Most recently, there has been additional preliminary work with architects, as well as the building community, to gather and provide estimated construction costs. Those were presented to the village board most recently in October of 2022. We did have two committee of the whole discussions this year, in addition to a number of the, number of discussions leading up to 2022 on this subject, and at the October 20, excuse me, October 18, 2022 Committee of the Whole meeting, a direction was given to staff to develop a referendum question and present that back to the village board within the timeline required to place it on the ballot for April of 2023. That question is before you, has been included in the packet as well, and we are happy to answer any questions that the board may have relative to this.
Thanks, Phil. Let me just say that the question has, you know, it's been reviewed by the village's lawyers, and the village shouldn't, and is not allowed to make the question argumentative or weighted or anything like that. And so what we have is what, along, you know, with the advice of lawyers, is the legal and appropriate way to ask the question for our voters. And at this point, something must be done for the clubhouse, and we're at a point where we have, have to get the advice of the residents as to what they want done. So, you know, that's where we are, and, and all of us have talked about this at great length, and time is of the essence now. Anybody?
I have a few talking points, if I may.
Sure.
Okay. This concerns the referendum. Glencoe truly is a special place, a truly quality community. Our community surveys and comprehensive plan polling tell us that our residents highly value community amenities. The proposed bond issue is not about the quality or management of the golf course itself, which is really quite good. It's about maintaining and expanding the deteriorating clubhouse and surroundings, which have been under review for the past 10 years. It will take a substantial financial commitment to make the needed improvements, and issuing municipal bonds is probably the lowest cost approach. When the final plans, while the final plans are not complete, there may be ways to reduce the anticipated costs. The goal should be for the clubhouse to pay its operational costs and a large portion of capital and debt service costs as well. In the end, it's up to our citizens to determine the scope, cost, and quality of our amenities by voting in reference.
Thanks. Anybody else want to comment? Once there's a referendum on the ballot, there's going to be, I expect, a lot of discussion about whether people should vote yes or no. I note that one of the leaders of the Friends of the Golf Club is here, and I don't know whether you want to say anything in advance of this, but I know that once it's on the ballot, they'll have a lot to say, and that's all in the good. Okay.
President Rowan, I just, I know you're asking for board comments, and before anyone else comments, I just want to urge the board to keep your comments, as Trustee Underdunk did, to factual and general and non-solicitous or political type of comments. Because we, or you as a board, and we as a village, are not able to either support or oppose the referendum. If you vote to put it on the agenda, we can't be involved in the politics of it. We can provide factual information about it. So if you do want to comment, as Trustee Underdunk did, I would keep your comments to general principles and not persuasive political viewpoints.
Okay.
I had one. Can you help me understand the purpose of referring to the commission feasibility study without actually providing any results of that study? It seems to raise the question of, well, what did the study say before I answer this question? Just wondering what the thought process was to put that out there without informing the public of what the conclusion of the feasibility study is.
It generally was to let the public know that there was a feasibility study. It is available. It's a public document. It can either be FOIA'd or, I think during...
It's available on the village's website.
Yeah, there you go. It's on the village's website. It's simply to let them know that a feasibility study was conducted.
Okay, and you've determined it doesn't make sense to put in any result of that study?
We wanted to be careful not to, in our own terms, either by a lawyer or other layman, characterize the feasibility study. It was prepared by a professional. It should be reviewed, in their words, not ours, not our summary, in an attempt to condense it into a paragraph.
We're trying to avoid a bill bar problem.
I was just gonna say that. I don't know what that is, but...
You know, it was the Attorney General's description of the...
What's his name?
Specialty Counsel in Investigation and Reports. And, you know, no good comes of that, because you give your back-of-the- envelope description, and then people wrote reports of, yeah, that's wrong. So we need to avoid that, and we also have to have a referendum question that people can look at on a ballot and answer, and then get out of there before the day is done.
Agreed. Could be shorter by actually just striking that whole bit, but that's fine, and you'd be out of there a half second sooner.
And that's, by the way, that's your choice. This is our suggestion. You can delete that if there's a majority on the board that wants to. We felt it was important that the public knew that there was a feasibility study.
That's cool. I'm not going to push it. But when I read it, my first reaction was, well, gee, what did the report say? That's all. And I'm going to guess that the vast majority of our residents haven't gone ahead and read that report, and they're going to be asked to answer it, and then they're going to have this feeling of, well, shoot, I should probably read the report before answering it, so maybe I won't answer. Anyways, that was my crazy thought. And you could avoid that craziness by striking it or saying what a conclusion, if there was a clear conclusion. But maybe there isn't one, and therefore, you know, maybe I shouldn't vote for this. Anyway, sorry, that's...
For what it's worth, I'll say I think it's appropriate to leave it in there. The feasibility study doesn't say how we should fix the problem, but it identified the problem. And, you know, we're asking the voters how to fix, you know, how to fix the problem. And the referendum suggests, you know, $15 million.
Yeah, I mean, we have a wordsmith, but then I would say the thing identified these problems related to, I wouldn't change anything in there, just say that we identify, the report identifies problems with the facilities and deteriorating conditions and increased cost of repairs. Right, anyways. Lawyers, not English teachers.
Joe, did you want to comment on this?
I see Pete's point. I wonder if we just make the feasibility study available very prominently on the website so that we can get that to people. It gives an appearance, it certainly gives them transparency into seeing what it was, and it's not something they have to search around for on the website, right? It's very prominent where they can find it.
So I read this as saying that the feasibility study was part of the village's determination that there were deteriorating conditions and increased cost of repairs, and then that's sort of the preface. And then, okay, we need to replace it, and then we're asking the voters, do they approve $15 million to replace it?
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm saying, like, a lot of people haven't been there. If you're there, you don't need it, you don't need but 30 seconds. But people that might not have been there, maybe they want to look at it, right? Maybe we just make it very easy for them to find.
And Trustee Hallwax, if I might, we, what the village's process has been for our last several referenda questions has been to create a specific webpage on the village's website that provides factual information relative to what's being asked of the voters. So the, there is a pretty significant amount of information that's being assembled, that has already been assembled, and that will be placed on the village's website in a prominent location so that people can find it and utilize that information as they're considering options. But we will always work to make that information as visible and clear to those that are seeking it out as we can.
Any other comments? Does that, I mean, if a majority of the board wants to change the language, we've got a lawyer here to help us not screw it up. Although Chapman, it's Steve, you'd have to put aside the Chapman and Cutler guys. I'm okay with it as written, but if a majority of the board wants to tinker, this is our chance. I don't think a majority wants to tinker. So is there a motion to approve the ordinance with the text of the referendum question for April?
Motion to move with the referendum question for April.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Mulvaney.
Yes.
Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Rubin.
Yes.
Trustee Vrie.
Yes.
The motion carries. We're going to have a referendum, and our Golf Club, Friends of the Golf Club group is going to have to be busy. And, you know, I can say that the village stands ready to help. That's Phil, that's Stella, that stand ready to help with facts.
Well said.
Okay. That concludes our regular business tonight. Is there any other business?
I'm going to be a pain. I had two things I wanted to say earlier. Leaf program, so we've talked about this great leaf program with the gardens. The Sustainability Task Force has initiative. I'm sure we all know about it. I'm sure we all have our "Leave the Leaves" sign in our yards. So it's a great program with the gardens. But please, when we communicate about it, we should also, in the same language...
Which we did.
Suggest we leave some of the leaves behind. We don't need to chase every leaf with a gas blower, gas blowers related to this topic. We've taken some leadership in trying to change our position on gas blowers. I think we can accelerate what is being talked about here in Glencoe. Let's not be afraid to use electric gas blowers, or gosh forbid, a rake.
One thing I will say, we collected about 1,000 cubic yards fewer leaves this year than last. So I do think that that effort is in the vernacular, and we made sure to include it in every communication that we did relative to the leaf collection program.
And I just, I was one of those folks. I mean, we have, in the 1980s, I did it all myself. It was brutal. That's part of the reason we have the leaf pickup program. I got elected to the village board to get the leaf program. But we left a lot of our leaves in the beds around our lawn, and I'm sure a lot of other people did too.
That's great. I really appreciate that. The other thing I'll mention when we're talking about our water infrastructure, we ought to make reference to the importance of conservation. We talked about a rate increase, by the way, 7% increase in rate. You can easily drop your water use 7% or more by any national or international standard. Our water use is high. Would not be much of a challenge to reduce that if you're worried about the price rate. And by the way, the more we conserve, the lower our operating costs, the lower risk with some of our infrastructure and reducing the future increased rate. So water conservation, when we're talking about water infrastructure, let's link the two, because I think that's all-around positive messaging and cost savings. And it's one of the task force initiatives to promote education around water conservation. Thank you.
Pete, I want to thank you for being a leader in getting us to do that. Okay. I don't see any other business. We do not have a closed session scheduled. So happy holidays, everybody. Thank you, everybody. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.